I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting of March 10th, 2022. Have a roll call.
Don McBride?
Here.
Aaron Rooney?
Here.
Joe Chapel?
Absent.
And Abe Gassimpor?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Has anyone got public comments that's not on the agenda tonight? You want to take it from there?
Approval of minutes.
Approval of minutes.
You guys have a... Are you good with it? Motion for approval of minutes?
Oh, motion for minute approval? Apologize, our normal leader isn't here.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Who's second?
I'll second it.
Oh, okay. Don McBride?
Here.
Aaron Rooney?
Here.
Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
All right, good to go.
I guess I do the next one.
Yep, you can introduce it.
PC application number 22-003. Discussion public possible action on a request rezoned a property located at 1501 West Noble Avenue, Capital Heights, Block 6, Lots 1 through 5, from R1, single-family, to C1 Neighborhood Shopping District. Staff report.
Thank you. As you indicated, this is a rezoned to C1. It's currently zoned R1, single-family dwelling. The property is a 17,500 square foot property, right there at the corner of Noble Avenue and 14th Street. The request for C1 is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan designates that area as urban corridor, which is meant to be more of a limited commercial type use, to have low-impact commercial uses. As you have in my staff report, and I'll go over a few of them just so with the public here in that, generally, a property like this has probably more than one land use consideration. Generally, on the corners, you may have a, the, as they would call it, corner store type use, but it could just as well be a multifamily in that. But given its location and that, it's more suitable for those type of uses. So, a rezone isn't always out of the question for these properties. However, there's obviously some land use considerations. When you look in the area, there is no immediate commercial in that area. There are some up as you go on Oklahoma Avenue near the school. There's some C1 in that area. There's also some C2 as you go down the convenience store, car wash. But in that immediate area, there is currently not any C1. The, as I said, the land use considerations, multifamily could be just as easily for that property as, as commercial. It could be even for, even for single-family as it sits. As you guys may remember, there was a dilapidated structure on that property. The current owner had purchased that property, demoed the building, and so now it sits vacant. Previously, it was one large structure that I think the last use was a daycare in that. But again, a structure like that, even in a multifamily with two to four units, wouldn't be out of the norm for that. One thing is, is if it were to go to C1, the development of the property, the size of the building, would likely be fairly limited. I figured maybe at best 5,000 square foot building. Given the setbacks that are required in C1, the parking requirements and that, they may at best get a 5,000 square foot building there. The, so tonight, you know, again, it's a land use consideration, so you have to decide whether or not, if it goes to C1, that any use that is permitted, or could be permitted within C1, would be a permissible use for that particular location. There's obviously public here that are going to speak in that. I think most of them probably are not supportive of it, which is fine, in that, but they'll obviously be able to tell you some of their concerns. But as we have in the past, when we have a rezone, you know, it's pretty much all or nothing. We can't condition it. We can't, you know, put different, limit certain uses, allow other uses. It's either going to go to C1, or it's not, type of thing. So having, and then also, there were four letters that were sent to me, which were provided in your packet. All four letters were objecting to the rezone. Some of those may be here tonight, I'm not sure, but those were provided to you in that. So finally, staff does not have a specific recommendation. Staff will state that from a purely land use consideration, C1 meets the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. However, from a current development perspective, the introduction of C1 to this specific area may be premature at this time. So, I will leave it back to the commission if you have any questions of me. If not, we can open it up for the public to state their, or, you know, have any concerns.
I think I'd like to hear from the public first.
Okay.
So, if you'd come up one at a time, state your name, where you live, for, for a chance.
My name's Kenny Porter. I live at 1501 West Cleveland. I'm about 175 foot to the south of this property. Been there 30 years. Nice, quiet neighborhood. We had a problem with job port coming down through there, and they'd walk to the convenience stores when they were further down there at 8th and 9th Street. And since we got that store up the hill, they don't come down there anymore. So, first time in 30 years, we've got a nice, quiet, peaceful neighborhood. We can leave, you know, without locking doors and caring after stuff. I've asked the gentleman what he's going to put in that property, and never has answered us. So we're all kind of curious. There's probably, what, 25 of us here, 30 of us? And they were all pretty curious what's going to happen there. And none of us, I believe, are very excited about changing this from R1 to, was it C1 they wanted to do?
Yes.
I'm pretty opposed to it. Anything else?
No. Appreciate it. I appreciate it.
I'm Edna Oliver. I live at 1512 West Noble, directly across the street from this. And I am totally and completely against anything but a single-family home. I don't want the noise. I don't want the traffic. We can't get in and out of Noble now. So, leave it alone. I'm begging you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ginger Lajewski. I live at 221 North 13th, so I'm a block away from where this would be. I'm completely against it, too. From a noise perspective, from a traffic perspective, and from a light pollution's perspective. My home, the back of our house would be that facing that, and it's already, you know, neighborhood dogs and the traffic on Noble is already too much. And I work from home during the day. I absolutely do not want to hear a car door slamming, cars honking, people arguing at a gas station while I'm trying to work. Not to mention if it's open late in the evenings. So, I'm completely against it. A single-family home would be fine. Another daycare center would be fine. But, not much more than that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Stokes. We currently own the house at 1524 West Cleveland. My wife and I just moved in there approximately six months ago. Now, from the community we've been talking with, and it's a wonderful community out there, we have seen, and also are happy to see, how it's increasing in lifestyle and quality. Homes are being repaired and fixed up. A lot of families are moving in from other areas, and it's just an all-around good thing that I've seen in the short time I've been here, as well as discussed with other residents in the area. Now, the problem that I have, and my wife as well, and also several of the residents that I've spoken with in the neighborhood, is what is going to be this business that is put there? Now, of course, it has been registered as possibly being a commercial building. I've heard yammer yammer that it could be a grocery store, or a hardware store, or whoever. Nobody really knows the information on this. I've also been hearing that nobody can get a straight answer out of the person that's going to have this place built. Now, I'm going to put my facts on the table here. One of the things is, is down the street, there is a gas station, car wash, grocery store. Everybody behind me knows the goings-on there late at night. There's been numerous occasions of crime and other things that have taken place that the police have been involved with. I, and I'm sure the people behind me, do not want to see an establishment like that put on that corner and have the same thing happen there. Now, the other thing, and I'm sure this is a him or ha, it depends upon what your mindset is on the topic. My wife has described this. The last thing I want to see is another cannabis club, another marijuana dispensary, all that stuff. From what I've seen in the count, there's already seven here within a five-block radius downtown. Do we really need another one of those? I'm not going to say what my policies are on the narcotic, but that's about that. The other thing is, and this is the big flag, this is all rumor, or I'm not sure if it's fact or not, but I was told that they were denied building an apartment building there. Now, one thing I want to put on the book, and it might sound like I'm just being a conspiracy theorist, but what easy way to get around not having your apartment building, and putting a store in, and then having apartments up above? Well, that's pretty much all I have to make on my statement tonight. I know that the people behind me, at least a good percentage of them, think the same way I do. And I surely hope that the evidence that I've brought forward to you on the topic will fall on solid ears. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Paula Russell, and I live directly across the street from the, at 1508 West Noble, from the property. And I don't want to look out my front door to any kind of business. I don't want to have to fight the lights. I don't want to hear the noise. If it's a gas station, I don't want my property value to decline immediately if it becomes a gas station. I don't want to, somebody accidentally leave their car in neutral and drive away from the pump and start a fire. My husband is very ill. He couldn't get out of the house if there was to be something of that nature. We don't have a fire department on the west side of town. We'd burn it before they got there to put the fire out. It's a very, very not smart idea, in my opinion. Thank you.
My name's Tim Clark, and I live at 1517 West Noble. I'm the adjoining property owner to the east. My wife and I moved to Guthrie from Edmond about, I don't know, maybe six years ago now. We both work from home now, and, you know, we are both opposed to this, to go to C1. I mean, we hate it. What we love about Guthrie is the Victorian community, and we like the way, you know, it's, the way, the feel of it. And we just think that, you know, while we have historical ordinances that cover homes now and stuff, which is all good, and that the planning director's done, we don't have it for C1. You know what I mean? They don't have to make it look historical really in any way, it doesn't seem like. But we, you know, our bedroom sits on that side, so like the rest of the people here, we're really concerned about the light pollution and the noise. Not only that, from a site planning perspective, your city planner, I agree with him. There's just, there's really limited space to do a whole lot there. Also, I share my access point with the adjoining landowner. So, you know, you said, I mean, so I have difficulties there. I don't know what I, do I need to move my access point now, or, you know, what do I need to do? You know what I mean? There's just questions there. So, for all those reasons, we oppose it.
Hi, I'm Anita Riddle. This is my husband, John. And just about a year ago, we purchased the property right behind this one at 1502 West Cleveland. And as y'all might know, that one was, well, it'd been empty for 20 years, except for all the raccoons in it. So, we've spent nearly a year rehabbing it with the way things have been this year, between, you know, just expenses going up and supply chain and all that. And we're at the finish line here, where we have done about 13 homes around town, tried to make a really ugly home into a beautiful home for somebody, and we have renters that they rent the second they're on the market. We were planning on flipping this one, but honestly, between the traffic, the noise, the light, and I can't imagine if, you know, if we put this on the market and the realtor has to disclose, well, they're going to build commercial behind here, you're going to have delivery trucks, dumpsters, traffic coming in, that we're going to lose money. And I, you know, I mean, that's our, one of our bottoms lines. But the bigger thing is, I don't think it's a good thing for Guthrie. That's a beautiful community. I'd like to do some more in the area. And I think those pockets like that all over that are just getting better and better and better, I don't see this as an improvement. People can go down to the gas station and go up to Valero to get a few things if they're really needing something quick. And to, it's only two lanes there, and, I don't know. We're opposed. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm, she's around with all that stuff. It's really a nice little neighborhood there. And the west side, over the last 10, 15 years, especially the last 10 years especially, has really started to clean up over there.
It's flourishing, yeah.
A lot of the old dilapidated buildings have been by other friends of ours as well. Ones that are almost falling down, been taken down to the studs and fixed up, and, and, Abe knows. He has one or two he did. So, it's really starting to clean up over there and looking nice. And we're getting some nice neighbors in that neighborhood. I know that the drug traffic has went way down there. You've got real long-term people wanting to live in the same community. And I just think that the C1 would disrupt that, would mess up the ambiance they've already got for a residential neighborhood.
I can't imagine trying to sell our home to a nice family and say, oh, but here you go, you know, it's a four-bedroom, two-nappet bath we're doing now. It's going to be lovely, and it'd be a nice home for someone, so.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, Council. My name is Jacob Dotter. My wife and I, we have four children. We brought three of them with us today. We actually bought the house directly east of that a year ago, last March. And it, we're at 1421 West Noble, so we are just right across the, you know, little street that divides us. And we watched them tear it down and everything else. And we watched this wonderful couple and all the contractors they hire come in and restore the house that's directly behind it. And it's been our big hope that a lot more people would come in and start doing that good work to put in those single-family homes, because there are a lot of beautiful homes there. And especially the one we bought. It's gorgeous, and it's served our family really well for the year that we've lived here. But putting in something like a gas station and stuff, and I know my son has several friends in his grade, his first grade, that come over to our house all the time. And just having a gas station right next to us across that little easement would, would really disrupt the neighborhood families that are there, and the children that come through that play all around that area. As it is, we're already on a main road, and I know there weren't even much trick-or-treaters this past year in the area. They all kind of stuck to the back, but it would even, you know, decrease that family value further that this neighborhood has if a gas station was put there, or any other kind of commercial property. Thank you.
I'm George Privet. I live at 1424 West Noble, which is across the intersection diagonally from the property that we're talking about tonight. And this case has been pretty well stated by all the people that spoke ahead of me, but I'm opposed to it for, for the same reasons and the fact that having, I grew up there. My folks bought the house that I'm in in 1943, and they lived in it four years before I was born. And when my folks died, I had to buy out four siblings, so I've got money invested in that. And then we rehabbed the house afterward. So, you know, I've got a fortune tied up in it. I have a lot at stake if this were to go commercial. And I think we're still a little vague on what commercial property it would be. Don't like the idea of that, but then I don't like the idea of anything other than single-family residents being in the neighborhood. I grew up with that, when that house was, or when I was a child, that was known as the Ritz-Hofft House. Ritz-Hofft Park's right up the street from us. I remember when Ritz-Hofft Park was built. So, my roots run really deep in that neighborhood. And I would just hate to see this happen to it. And I have my own reasons, but these other people have plenty of other reasons. Some of them are different from mine, but they're all good reasons, and I would like to see you honor our desires. Thank you.
Well, if you grew up there your whole life, you probably knew the Harlins and...
Oh, I did, yeah. My sister dated Jerry Harland. All those houses, to me, have different names than they have nowadays.
I've heard all those stories from Marvin.
From who?
Marvin Harland.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You live in Lee Uwe's house, I assume?
Pardon me?
Do you live at Lee Uwe's house?
Yes. Yeah, I'm familiar with that. Oh, no, I don't live there. Is that what the question?
Oh.
No, no. The house I live in has been the Privet House since 1943. It was originally built by one of Guthrie's early mayors, John Nisley. And his daughter, who was born in that house, I believe in 1910, came to visit when I was a child, and told us about the construction of the house and the neighborhood, and...
Better watch, you'll tell your age.
I don't mind telling my age. Yeah. But like I said, our family's been there pushing 80 years, and I was not wanting to see any commercial development in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Megan Nguyen. I'm at 1317 West Cleveland Avenue, so I'm a little bit further down from the property. I'm a new resident to Guthrie. We moved in one of those flipped houses that everyone's been talking about two years ago. And what really drew us to this area of Guthrie, not being from this area, is the small-town feel and the revitalization that's going on in specifically that area. Having four children myself, having a C1 property that close to my house, even though we still have those C2 properties with the gas station and the car wash, I think it's really unacceptable for the amount of work that we've put into the neighborhood and the revitalization that's going on in that area of the neighborhood, as well as we can't handle the traffic on Noble with it being two lanes and there's no turn lane. So I think it would be really irresponsible to put a C1 property right there in the middle of the neighborhood, and pretty much ditto everything everyone else has said so far. So, great points.
Thank you.
All right. I'm the owner who's trying to build a building. My name is Eric from Roma. I own the Guthrie Rental Property, LNC. I do a lot of renovation of the houses, too, and I do a lot of rental properties. The reason I bought this property is to do something good about it, because it was empty. I drove this road for about five years, every day up and down, maybe 10 times during the day. The house was in terrible condition. It was unacceptable to do any remodeling, and it was nothing to save. I really wanted to save, because it would save my budget, you know, but we had to demolish. And the reason I am here today, it's because it's not going to be a gas station. It's going to be a C1. This is about helping the community, which I mean helping the community building something like, for example, a convenience store that pants, mom and pops, no gas station. There'll never be a gas there whatsoever. It will be a pharmacy, something, maybe a dental office, you know, some sort of those things, but nothing like that nature. It will never happen. I don't do that way business either, you know, so I'm here to help the community. I've always been part of this community for over 15 years in this town. So, I mean, I understand people are unhappy, and they're telling me, I listen to their concerns, oh, we're losing money, we invest this. Well, I'm an investor, too, you know? I'm trying to feed my family just as everybody else. And I sure want and always appreciate the community. I don't want them to lose anything, but you know, this is, the answers they give to, I heard from them, it's really unfair, you know, to be honest with you, which will never happen as a gas station. I will never, ever, because I don't want to put anything that risks the community around it. As far as, I heard some people here, they said, oh, we have some other problems narcotic. Either ways, as a CBD or marijuana store, it will never happen. I don't, I don't mind whatever they do, but I don't want to be part of it. So I'll never be part of it as long as I'm owner of that property. Other than that, anybody else have any other questions?
Can we ask you any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, you can ask him all the questions you want.
You live in Guthrie?
Yeah.
Where you live at?
I live at 702 South Drexel.
702 South Drexel.
I also live in, lived in Le Musa, lived in Debbie Drive.
So where you live at now?
I live at 702 South Drexel.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, you go in, you get a rezoned when you want it.
Yeah.
And you go in and you throw up something. You either sell it, and they can change it, put whatever they want to in there, or you can keep it for a while, and then you change it to whatever you want.
Oh, I'm not going to change it.
I don't care what you're looking at. I'm asking you a question.
I guess I have questions for you, Dan.
Mm-hmm.
So, when they see C1, what are the possibilities for C1?
It's essentially a retail office-type zoning. And it's called neighborhood shopping district, so it's a limited commercial. So as the owner indicated, it could have a dental office, it could have a convenience store. As he indicated, I do not believe in C1, you can have the fueling islands, but it would probably not be practical from a development standpoint anyway. But it is a retail office-type district. So when you start to get into automotive repair, that, that would not be allowed in a C1. That moves up into a C2 zoning.
Okay. What about a gas station?
Yeah, that's what I was saying is, depending on the, you know, how it would be laid out, there's possibilities. I just don't know if it's going to be practical from a development standpoint.
It's a little small.
Yeah, it's a little small in that, so I, you know. And just so the public knows, you know, there are some controls in the code to address impacts or potential impacts to adjacent properties. There's buffering requirements. There's also even for light requirements, even signage to not be too bright, you know, there's other things like that in place. As the one gentleman indicated, from a residential standpoint, it is within the new overlay district. However, that does not apply to commercial. However, given the location and the residential around it, there would be, at least on my end, a requirement of an enhanced building design and architecture to fit in with that area and that. And so, there would be some of those in place, but...
Okay. I just have some worries as far as opening the Pandora's Box, if you will, with C1. Some I don't fully understand. So, things like, would a, would a bar qualify in C1?
Uh, no.
What about...
Actually, there, you can't have a bar, I don't think, except C2. You can't even have a bar as a permitted use downtown.
Okay.
Marijuana shop?
Uh, yes.
So you could have one then, right?
Yes. That's a state requirement. Our local zoning doesn't have that.
What about...
I'm sorry.
What about, like, adult entertainment?
No. That's strictly limited to, yeah, no, that's strictly limited to the industrial.
You have a question?
That's strictly limited to industrial.
Because, yeah...
You couldn't even have that down the road.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. No, that's a fair question.
What's the zoning down on the corner to gas stations? Is that a C2?
Yeah, that's a C2. And the, and the car wash is a C2. That's the primary C2 in the area, because even as you go west up by the school and that, that's all C1. Recently, we did do a rezone for right at the corner of, is it 19th over there by the school? 19th and that, we zoned that to C1, but that's been a commercial use for years. It just never had the proper zoning.
It's been commercial forever.
In that. I will say that the only, you know, from my perspective, the only commercial zoning that would be even remotely appropriate would be C1. Anything beyond that is not appropriate for that area.
So, do you have your schedule planned, what the building is going to be like?
No, I haven't yet, because what I, what we are thinking is not going to be bigger than 4500.
Is it going to be a Victorian building?
Well, it's going to be like a brick building, so...
Oh, brick building?
Yeah.
Not Victorian, like your neighbors?
No.
That across the street?
No.
No.
And if I could, you know, just help to answer your question, you know, through a rezone process, there's not a requirement to have a specific use, not to even have a specific site plan or that. Again, it's based on the land use and potential there. Obviously, there's other codes in place, so at the time of development, there'll be some criteria, but right now, they don't have to disclose if they don't, you know, have anything.
Even though you got a lot of Victorian homes over there, we're not in the, we're not in the historical district.
No, and, and like I said, it, the, the overlay district was for residential. Uh, so, it falls under our, what we call our general, uh, design standards for commercial.
So, question for you, Dan. Uh, if we were to deny the request at this time, would they be able to apply it in the future?
Yeah, there, there's, there is a timeframe in place, I think it's six months. It's either six months or a year. You cannot, uh, reapply with the same application for the same property, uh, in that. So, yeah, you, there would be a waiting time, but at a later date, definitely. Uh, if they changed their zoning, for instance, if they say, "Well, then I wanna go multifamily" or something, they could resubmit that. But for a, uh, commercial rezone, it would, there would be a timeframe before they could even resubmit.
Next step is council?
Yes, yes, you guys, as you know, are a recommendation body. So, whether you say yes, whether you say no, uh, it still goes to the council for their final decision. Uh, they take into account staff's, uh, you know, recommendation, your guys' recommendation, and ultimately make a decision.
Any questions?
Anybody else?
For you guys, um, is there some way to put on as far as, if you look here, all the people in this room, all the people around the block of that area, all the, all the neighbors in that neighborhood? I mean, it's gonna affect these people directly, more than it looks down the street. So, I think we should have some kind of a saying, that was the one. Secondly, I, I like your point that you made earlier, that once you make this C1, you have open Pandora's Box. The houses can be bought and sold to somebody else, and sold to somebody else. Owner two or three can start, you know, changing and changing it, to where it's not something that's desirable for the community. And one last point, since this neighborhood is growing and the houses there are being improved on, and the neighborhood is getting better, why not take the property and build on that premise? To take something and put a couple of nice houses there? Why not, uh, build something that's gonna complement the neighborhood, and make it, you know, a stronger neighborhood? Why not do that? You could make money on that too.
Well, uh, you have a good point, but the problem is, I don't do any more rental properties and living houses. I don't wanna do that. I wanna do something that will help the community. Across the street, about what, four blocks, you have a...
Before we continue on this subject, can I ask a personal financial question for that? How, can I know how much you spent on the house, how much you're going to sell it for?
Well, the financial, I bought it, it's public record, so, and I have to pay...
But demo's not, yeah, demo's not.
Let's...
So, how much have you spent on the house?
Well, I spent over eighty thousand.
I think we can take that offline.
Yeah, yeah. Let's focus back on... As I say, you can talk to them afterwards, because that's really not pertinent to any decision.
So, you talk about the community, I think this is the community that's...
No, correct, no, I thought that...
The whole neighborhood up there kinda gets you on this, aren't they?
Well...
Like I said, there is commercial property three blocks away from me. I don't see a point, why can I not build this?
Because the community that you're answering is not one of you.
Okay. Little bit of order, little bit of order, if we can...
Well, this property, this property, hold on, this property always served as a commercial. Even the taxes were paid as a commercial zoning.
Okay, 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 that's enough.
Everybody can speak.
We've heard enough.
We can't really have a free-for-all here, so, yeah, thank you.
You through?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Somebody else wanna speak?
John, can you, if you can, can you come up to the, thank you.
When we bought the property, we did behind it, at fifteen oh two, uh, West Cleveland. We had considered this property as well. We were thinking about taking it and making it, uh, reven- uh, rehabbing what was there. And then, they had a demolition on both of these buildings. The city had put a demolition on these because of the condition they were in. So, when we came in, we, we went to the city and gave them a plan, what we wanted to build. We had to come in with drawings and the whole bit and show them we're serious about this, we're to get the property. And then, that stopped the demolition for us to take it over. And then, now to come back and then, and then put, uh, I think behind it, it's not neighborhood, that was never our goal. We were trying to build up the neighborhood. And I think that we're still back to this thing of, if we open Pandora's Box, it's gonna screw up the neighborhood. Uh, not more than just one person. And I don't, there's no reason you can't make money on that property as a residential property. There's, there's five lots there, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can easily get a couple of nice houses in there.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate that he said that he's trying to help the community. Um, I was an entrepreneur in another city, and part of my business plan and part of me going to that city to ask for approval was to make sure that there was healthy competition. And everything that he stated, that it could be a dentist office, a pharmacy, we literally have down the road. Um, that's not good competitive economics when it comes to a small town like Guthrie. Um, that's when you get seven marijuana distilleries in five blocks, um, which is not healthy for its citizens or the economics of the city. Um, so, I'm, I'm against it again, because all the answers that he gave were not good commercial investments, as far as what we already have in this town that's serving us already.
Thank you.
I'm Jacqueline Schwartz, we live at fifteen oh nine, which is right next to Kenny, and just on the other side of the street from the property they mentioned. I have all the same concerns that everybody else did, I came here with an open mind. My concern was, he's not sure what he's gonna do with it. So, to me, it feels like he bought the property as a residential. He wants to rezone it as commercial and sell it for a profit, at the expense of all the other residents in the town, that he is not even gonna be participating in the neighborhood. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, we'll let you speak, and then we're gonna shut it off, okay?
Got it, thanks. One thing I'd like to ask you, so you're building this place, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and you wanna put in a grocery store, or a happy fun time party place, or whatever else you might wanna put in there? Or, are you just building this thing and then sell it and you're gone?
No, I'm gonna be for sure, you know, be a business in that property.
That does, what, so, what, alright, so excuse me, I'm, I guess maybe my ear being dead from being in the army didn't pick up on that. So, what was that again?
I'm for sure gonna have a business there in that property.
So, this is your business, or somebody you're gonna rent it to?
This really isn't pertinent to the decision. At this point, I don't think we need to be...
Excuse me.
This isn't a trial.
Okay, so basically, the thing is, I'm gonna put down there, and again...
That's like asking if you're gonna buy your home and never sell it.
Got it, no, I understand, I, I back off on those last questions. So, the main thing, excuse me, the main thing that I'm concerned with is crime. We all know what goes on down the block at the liquor store. We see the papers, we see the police, and we don't want it on our side of the block. The safety of our neighborhood, the safety of our children. We know that the dregs, yes, excuse me, that's what I'm gonna call them, they go there. Sure enough, the police show up for some whatever, and we don't want it. So, the last thing I wanna see, guaranteed the business might be a hundred percent legit, and they're there for the best of the community, but we all know cockroaches like cream pie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stan, anybody with comments?
The chairman, uh, I've been a Realtor for thirty-eight years, and been Guthrie for forty-some years. And the entire time, the, being historic Guthrie has been our selling point. This is something we always bragged about. At the same time, that area there is in a route of the tourist route, they go into Lily's House, the Judge's House. I mean, we have the, uh, this is just part of the tour. And, and regardless of what this gentleman is saying there, what he wanna do, the minute that this property got rezoned, there's no guarantee who's gonna own it next, and what they can do with it, and they are open to whatever they wanna do, which is allowed in a commercial C1. So, I re, and then these folks are my reason. I don't think this project should be approved, and I would like to just deny it.
And, this is probably the appropriate time. Uh, Commissioner Chaplin couldn't be here tonight. He did send me an email, and he would like me to basically read what he, uh, would like to have his input, even though he's not voting, uh, he felt that he still would like to have his input, so... Uh, he had stated that he wanted to go on the record as being opposed to the rezone at fifteen oh one West Noble. Uh, he writes, "I have heard from multiple residents in the area who are concerned about the application and the impact this might have on their property values and their quality of life, and I believe rightfully so. Although Noble is a main artery into our city, this is primarily a residential street in an area with many significant historical homes. I would like to thank you for your consideration."
Thank you.
Yes.
Have a motion from anybody?
Well, just my comments here, uh, I, I'm new to Guthrie as well, I've been here three and a half, four years. And I moved for the same reasons I heard from a lot of you, for the small-town feel and, and neighbors. And I really appreciate everybody that showed up, and, and this is really great, seeing how much people care. And, uh, you know, I respect everybody's investments, because I'm invested in this community as well. Um, me personally, I, I like seeing mixed use, I like being able to, I, I live in Guthrie proper. I love being able to walk to Hoboken or, you know, to Roma's. You know, and, and Mr. Roma, I appreciate, uh, you guys got great food. And, uh, you know, I, I think there, there could be potential for good things to be done in the neighborhood. I, uh, you know, I wanna see good things for Guthrie. Personally, I, I don't know if the plan is quite there yet, but I, I would like to see, you know, investors and be able to feel welcome to come to the table with ideas. So... My big point here is thank you to everybody for, for caring so much. Uh, do you have any questions or comments? Well, unfortunately, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
I'll say.
Okay. Motion in a second for a recommendation to deny, Aaron Rooney?
No, or, how does that work?
Yeah, you'd be voting yes, because it's for denial. Yes, okay. Abe Gassimport?
Yes.
And Don McBride?
Yes.
Okay. So, three O, recommendation of denial. Uh, and just so the public knows, uh, this will be going to the April fifth City Council meeting, which is the first council meeting in April. Uh, and as indicated earlier, uh, the City Council will make the decision. They can take the recommendation, or they can go, uh, also approve it either way. But just so you know, it's April fifth, uh, City Council meeting.
Would we be allowed to be heard there as well?
Yes, uh, the difference is there, they're a little bit more formal, so you'll just need to sign up ahead of time. Uh, but as long as you sign up ahead of time, you'll be able to, uh, speak. Yes. Yeah, there'll be a table out there with the paper, yeah. Yeah, you just can show up and there's a table out there. I'll be there so I can help you out, don't worry about it. Yeah, we'll get you there. And I have no staff comments tonight?
No, I don't have any comments, I'm good.
Okay.
No comments either.
With that, we'll adjourn.